Yes.
Good evening, it is 5:30 and so we're going to call the city council meeting to order. I would ask you to please turn your cell phones to silent or vibrate and then let's please all stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amanda, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Strebe.
Here.
Councilmember Dalby.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Mayor Lozio.
Here.
Items on the consent agenda, minutes for regular meeting number six on February 2nd and special meeting number seven on February 5th, 2016 is presented. Acknowledged January financial report and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Appointment of David Cecil to the Parks Advisory Board due to a vacancy, term to expire November 11th, 2018, and Richard Thompson to the Airport Advisory Board due to a vacancy, term to expire October 1st, 2016. Set April 5th, 2016, for a public hearing on the transit consolidated funding application. Set March 1st, 2016, for a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost of the apron project at the Otomo Regional Airport. Set March 1st, 2016, for a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for the sidewalk drop and detectable warning installation project, 2016. Set March 1st, 2016, for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of the 2016-2017 city budget. Approve the letter of support for a grant application to the State Historic Board for Friends of Naval Airspace, Otomo. Beer and liquor applications for El Rancho Grande, 232 East Main Street, pending final terms.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. I make one correction, it should be unitemated, it should be the naval air station instead of airspace, just so that's correct in the record. Thank you. Okay, there's a motion and a second, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Item C, we need a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So move.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to City Administrator Andy Morris, he has comments he wants to make.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, one update and another, just quite frankly, an item that'll be coming up tomorrow evening. First of all, you see the items listed there, update on council chambers' audio and visual equipment. You may recall from the previous meeting, some of the logistical challenges we were having with that, I want to let council know and the general public know as well. Staff, Tom Rogers and myself have been in contact with Eyes and Ears, which is, used to be Douglas Communications, and Matt Brush, is it with him about some of the equipment upgrades? I'm not going to go through those verse in scripture, if any one of the audience or, as an example, the news media would like a copy of what that list of equipment is, I'll be happy to provide that. But just as a brief update, the items that are listed, the audio and visual equipment, the audio and video equipment will all be new, and that's, that will be a function of the upgrades that we're talking about based on the estimate that we're going to receive, already received from Eyes and Ears. In addition to that, and visiting with Matt today, if council approves, and I'll back up a little bit, if council approves the expenditure of the funds that are at this point available, not specifically allocated, the system upgrades improvements could be in late March timeframe. But as, as you know, just as a backup to this, this is something Bob Jay and I've spent a little bit of time talking about at the next meeting, the March 1 meeting. I'll have in front of council a request to expend some of the unspent monies from the elevator project, which is approximately $22,000. In addition to that, there's also some additional fund balance money that we were able to tie in, because when you look, when you look at that invoice, it's approximately, well, not approximate, it's exactly $24,850, so we're north of that allotment. But I'm confident we'll be able to pull down the additional approximately $2,500 in fund balance and still be comfortable. But again, if council or any one of the audience wants to see a list of that equipment, I would, I'd be more than happy to provide that, but once you know, I will look for council action on, at the March 1 meeting. The other item, I would just bring your attention, the Solid Waste Commission is meeting tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM, and that's in room 108 downstairs in City Hall. Mr. Mayor and Council, I don't have anything else unless you or councilmembers have any questions.
Any questions for Andy? Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, sir.
Item E is the opportunity for anyone, do we have a, we have one, we'll call him up on F1, okay? Thank you. Want to go ahead and do F1?
Fee proposals for the Otomo Park Campground. Recommendation, approve the fee increases for the Otomo Park Campground.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Jean, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Listed below are the proposed fee increases for the Otomo Park Campground. The RV camping fee was raised from $13.50 to $15 in the fall of 2008. These fees, if approved, will take effect on April 1st, 2016, and should provide the campground with an additional $10,000 in revenue. And I listed some camping fees at other campgrounds that are similar to ours. The Otomo Park Campground current fees for tents, it's $9, and for RVs, it's $15. We'd like to raise the tent camping fee up to $10 and the RV fee up to $17. These fee proposals were approved by the Otomo Parks Advisory Board at their meeting on February 9th, and raising these fees will allow the city to capitalize on large events coming to Otomo, such as the Babe Ruth World Series and Ragback.
Any questions for Jean? Okay, we have one person that would like to speak to the council, so please come up and state your name and...
Mike LaPointe, I live at 709 East Vine here in Otomo, I camp over at Park. And just because you haven't raised the fees for a while, maybe you raised them a little bit too much last time, I can go 15 miles north, camp for 10 bucks a night, and the campground's only a few years old. There's no reason to change the camp fees over at Park unless you give me some extra added value for my money, because I guarantee you, I will pull my camper 15 miles north. And it is a shame you guys want to gouge the two big events we're going to have in Otomo. I could go to Rathbun and camp a dollar cheaper if you raise them prices, the 17 bucks, Rathbun is $16 a night. So if you vote yes on this, you're voting to gouge the visitors of Otomo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. Mayor, I'd like to, if there's no one else, I'd like to make a point. Councilman Myers, go ahead.
Okay, well, I have been on the park advisory board for years and also attended the last meeting, and I, I really disregard the term of gouging, because I think as that presentation was made to us, it was clear that we were actually raising our rates to be competitive with other parks that offer the services we, we do. And then, Jean, I had a question, sorry, I'm sorry I didn't ask you while you were up there, but... And this thought has come to me the last few days, but there's been some discussion as to whether the fee increase, if in fact that creates more revenue than what we had expected or so forth, or what it will with the raise. Raised the question of, when we've added the concrete pads to the park, as we've tried to do a few each year, or several each year, was, is that done through budgeted park money or is that done just out of the city, city funds?
Okay, well, this past summer, it was done through the CIP program. Two years earlier, it was done through the Parks Fund Balance. And it was done, if you combine all the camping pads we paved in areas 2 and 3, total of close to $40,000 that we just invested in the campground. So yeah, that was all city money.
Okay, thank you.
Jean, if I could, have you taken a look of what capital improvements might still be needed at that campground in the, in the coming year, in the next five years?
Yes, we've looked at that extensively, and not including the Jimmy Jones Shelter, the number one thing that we want to target next is a new shower house. And we really think to build the type of shower house we want with like laundry facilities and maybe an office for the campground hosts, it's going to be close to $300,000. So, you know, we can do this, but we're going to have to do some research on how we're going to fund it, maybe writing grants, maybe putting money into the capital improvement program or whatever it takes, but that's a fairly large sum of money. But the current shower house, I don't know, it could be 40 to 50 years old, and one of the things people are asking for is a new shower house, plus paving roads also, that also needs to be done.
And I assume that, at least in principle, that some of this increased revenue would be put towards that?
Right, the money we take in from the campground goes into the general fund, then it comes back to the Parks Department in the form of operating budget and maybe indirectly into the CIP if I'm speaking correctly, but yeah, you know, it goes into the general fund, then it comes back to us indirectly in the Parks Budget.
Okay, thank you.
You and I just got a quick question. You had none?
Jean, it looks like in this upcoming fiscal year, it looks like the Parks Department, out of the general fund expenditures, looks like they're going to receive about $873,000 and some change. Is that correct?
That sounds exactly right, yes.
Okay, and so basically, the way that this, this works is, the increases from the campground will go into the general fund and then be allocated out of the general fund, various departments.
Correct.
And so the chances, basically, with these upcoming projects, not including CIP, which is always a part of Parks Projects, fees go up, go into the general fund, and then are allocated to the Parks for improvements, like Mr. LaPointe was talking about. So in essence, if these are funded and come to be, not including volunteer help and things that we've also been talks about for shower house and for upgrades to the Jimmy Jones Shelter, they will be, there will be improvements, knock on wood, as long as we don't get hit by this multi-residential too hard over the next three years, we will see some improvements, hopefully.
That's our plan, and, you know, keep in mind, the attendance and revenue at the campground has been increasing steadily since 2009, it's actually tripled since 2009, so...
Yeah, it looks like we're still below the state parks and stuff, slightly below, because, you know, we're in town, we're, you know, isolated to that true state park experience, so we're still under those, those rates. It seems like just being competitive seems like the right thing to do, so that would have, you would have my support on this.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment, you said $300,000 for the shower house and needed their, I'm assuming that includes labor.
Correct. If we hired a contractor to build a new shower house, I'm saying approximately $300,000, based on what I've seen at places like Le Waplo and some of the other campgrounds.
Yeah, with the, United Auto Workers from John Deere have stepped up as volunteers and they, talent that could really be used, so I just, my comment is, this may happen sooner than later with their help.
Sure, and if we had a set of plans to work with, we might be able to cut the cost of the shower house in half with volunteer labor, totally possible.
Wow, that, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, take, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Consideration of a traffic grant application to the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau. Recommendation, approve the grant submission and authorize the mayor and police chief to sign the application and contract upon receipt.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Good evening, Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Department has partnered with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau since 1988 to enhance our traffic and safety efforts. Previous grants have been used to purchase traffic safety related equipment and to pay overtime wages for special traffic enforcement activities. This partnership has helped us to combat both personal injury and alcohol related crashes. We have been invited once again to submit an application for a one-year grant. This proposal requests $20,000 in grant funding to be used for overtime wages and an additional $4,500 for traffic safety equipment. That'll be 10 preliminary breath testers or PBTs. The Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau will pay 1% of the officer overtime wages and 100% of the equipment.
Any questions for the Chief? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Approve the payment of $10,500 to Waggoner Solutions for the cleaning of the river diffuser. Recommendation, approve the payment of $10,500 to Waggoner Solutions of Donaldson, Iowa, for the cleaning of the river diffuser.
Is there a motion? The recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Cam, proceed with your recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. While this was not a budgeted project, it became necessary to have performed since we actually had flow come back to the plant even when the river was low. This is the first time since the diffuser was built in the mid-1990s that it had ever been cleaned. It had a buildup of sand, sediment, rock, et cetera, both inside and on top of the diffuse, which the divers had to clear. This is also necessary to have done so we could complete our diffuser performance analysis, which is required annually in our NPDES permit. A budget amendment may be required.
Okay, any questions for Cam about this expense?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
You said this is the first time that this sort of maintenance has been performed since it was installed?
Correct.
Why, why hasn't it been done to this point? Is that routine or something slipped through the cracks?
Normally, no, normally flow is such that you wouldn't have stuff accumulate, because the river has been high for, with all the flooding we've had with flooding or rain events, 2008, 2010, this past year, we had a lot of sand, both inside and on top of the diffuser. Well, this was not something that had ever been planned that you'd do on a routine basis.
Okay, so is this something that if, if we had several events like what we've had over the past few years, doing a better schedule of maintenance, could that reduce the cost a little bit? Or is it pretty much set at this $10,000 if they come?
I don't know how, we could not do the maintenance ourselves, I mean, we had to hire a team, they had three divers that went...
No, no, that's, that's what I'm getting at, if they come, regardless of the schedule, would it be that amount?
Is, they, yeah, they charge $3,500 per day.
Okay.
And clean it one day, it'll just be a $3,500 charge, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Bob?
Yeah, and mine, Cam was the same on the maintenance, and that, you've given the answer. The only other comment I'd make, I would offer possibly in-house, I know Public Works Director Seals is a scuba diver, so maybe in the future we could...
Well, he gets me sometimes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cam.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on the proposed lease of the south one-half of building number 23, 14860 Terminal Street at the Otomo Regional Airport, to Musco Sportslighting LLC. I've received no objections on this item.
Good evening, Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Musco Sportslighting LLC leases the south half, building 23, 14860 Terminal Street at the Otomo Regional Airport. Lease was set up to expire on December 12, 2015. Lease was extended through February 29, 2016, at the same terms and conditions contained in the original December 21, 2010 agreement, so that a new agreement could be, agreement could be arranged with an FBO, could be negotiated. The new proposed agreement provides that Musco will lease the approximate 19,706 square feet space in the south half of building 23 for the sum of 3,400 per month. The city will forward the sum of, excuse me, that should be 3,400 a month. The city will forward a sum of 3,100 per month to the FBO, Archangel Services LLC, for their aviation fuel pumping fees, and said FBO will sell the Jet A avgas to Musco at cost. The remaining 300 per month will remain with the city for maintenance expenses. In addition, Musco will pay the city of Otomo the sum of 8 cents per gallon in Jet A fuel flowage fees for the first year of this agreement and 12 cents for the second year. This agreement, this lease agreement is subject to a five-year renewal with fees to be renegotiated at that time. The new FBO, Archangel Services LLC, has agreed to sell Musco the Jet A aviation fuel at cost in exchange for the 3,100 per month pumping fees. That agreement with Archangel Services LLC was approved in the February 2, 2016 council meeting. Attached, please find a copy of the proposed lease agreement.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and so if there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this item, now's the time to do that. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 36, 2016, approving an Otomo Regional Airport lease agreement between the city of Otomo and Musco Sportslighting LLC for the south one-half of hangar building number 23, 14860 Terminal Street, Otomo. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 36, 2016.
Move recommendation as follows.
Second. Thank you. Okay, take the roll. Is there any question? Yes, go ahead.
I'm not quite clear on if they're selling that jet fuel to Musco at cost, does the city still get the 8 cents per gallon?
Yes.
On that?
Yes.
So they're going the whole 8 cents a gallon?
Well, in effect, how this works, Skip, is Musco wants a fixed cost on that fuel. They typically use 85,000 gallon a year, that's their, that's their average. I come up with about the same through ours. If you break that 3,100 down, that flows through us to them, to the FBO, that figures out about, I believe it was 50, it's actually 50 or 42 cents a gallon. So in essence, what the FBO is doing is charging 42 cents a gallon above cost in the rate of 3,100 per month. The way that got started was some months, Musco will use 10,000, some months they'll use 2,000. So Musco agreed with the city that they would pay a straight 3,100 a month on average to keep that flow to the FBO, that revenue stream, a steady stream. That's how it was with the last contract. With this contract, the other 300 of that just goes to us in the form of a maintenance fee for the tanks. In this new contract, we're doing the same thing, and then we've added, Musco will pay 8 cents a gallon fuel flowage to us the first year on top of that 300, and in the second year, 12 cents a gallon. So it will increase from 8 to 12 the second year, which in turn increases about, in the second year, it will be a little over $10,000 to the city, the new revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I might add that this was discussed with Musco, and they were in agreement with it.
They are in agreement, they're just waiting for the council to approve it.
So they're, they're comfortable from the conversation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll just add to that, and Mike, if you have something to augment, then feel free to do so. I had some conversations with Joni Keith about, there were some, the questions anyway about the incremental, the $300 in the fuel flowage fee, which brings incremental revenue to us, that staff's position was, we have certain expenses out there, particularly as it relates to capital improvements, that we have to bear, so it's not like that's, again, going into some secret fund or something, it goes to capitalize those expenses, and they're, they're pretty stiff. She was comfortable with that, I know, I've had some conversations, I'm trying to remember the gentleman's last name, was it Yates?
Doug Yates.
I was busy with him about what the city's position was, that issue was, I think, not locked down and granted yet, but he, he seemed comfortable with it, I don't know, may want to ask Mike if, if that's his interpretation, but my conversations with him via email where he was comfortable with it, even though that does bring additional revenue to the city.
Yeah, but basically, yeah, Doug's comfortable with it all, he was just questioning it like they all do, you know, kind of like Bob, he questioned it all. But we also invested, I explained to Doug that we also invested in de-icing equipment that we never really did come up with a way to charge for. So we built this fuel flowage in, along with our capital improvements, to help pay for that de-icing in a manner that everybody on the field's paying for it, because I could, it was actually going to come back to council years ago and it never did. So this way, it builds it in where we're paying for some of that de-icing with everybody on the field paying, and even our transits are paying that way. And those numbers would equate fairly close to what we use in de-icing. All that revenue will go to the airport fund balance, and in turn, that's what it will be paying for, and with that, he was, he knew we invested in that equipment, so he was comfortable, he was just asking for an explanation.
I think it is a good deal for the city, and I've had several conversations with Joni Keith, and she was very comfortable after talking with Mr. Keith in the conversation, so I think we, my recommendation to the council would be that we go ahead and approve this, and we certainly have the option of reviewing it at any time in the future, but this is the best deal we can come up with at this point.
It's a good deal for everybody, I feel. The other thing you might want to consider, Musco uses enough Jet A fuel that the FBO gets a fuel pricing break. If you take that 85,000, 90,000 gallon away a year, that fuel per gallon will go up, the more volume you can do, the cheaper you can buy it. So that, that's an added help to the FBO in the form of a little bit cheaper fuel, which in turn, they can turn around, mark up less and get more traffic coming in here.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yes, Bob.
So, Mike, according to this proposal, then, Archangel, is Archangel responsible for fueling the jet then, the Musco jet?
Correct.
And was that done prior by the former FBO also?
Yes, it was.
So there's no change there?
There's no change, it's exactly the same.
All right, thank you, okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, you ready to vote? Take the roll, please.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
This is the time, place and date set for a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property located at 130 Taft Avenue. I've received no objections on this item.
Good evening, Jody, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have a placarded house this evening at 130 Taft. Sealed bids were accepted until February 9th, and we received one bid. Staff recommends accepting that bid from Pedro and Miranda Moreno Portillo in the amount of $595. And I know that that doesn't sound like very much, but this house would cost at least $5,000 to demolish, and that's if there was no asbestos in the property. So selling it for a small amount to be repaired and put back on the tax rolls is a better option than demolition.
Absolutely is, it'll, it'll pay dividends for years to come.
Okay, this is a public hearing on this item, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this particular issue, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Myers.
Yes.
Resolution number 45, 2016, accepting the bid and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 130 Taft Avenue to Pedro and Miranda Moreno Portillo for the sum of $595. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 45, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Jody? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby.
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Resolution number 42, 2016, approving change order number two for the ready-mixed concrete for the Joseph Avenue Reconstruction Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 42, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Larry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This change order is to make a correction to the payment to the material supplier for Joseph Avenue Reconstruction. We brought to our attention that there was a mathematical error of $75. This will make the new contract 21,450 for the concrete supplied, and change the total contract to 130,581.98.
Any questions for Larry? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 43, 2016, approving change order number two for the Bridgeview Center Building Automation Control Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 43, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Dwight, you've been intimately involved with us, so give us your information.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, a bit of history for the benefit of the public. A contractor was awarded to Winger Contracting September 15th, 2015, in the amount of 122,793. This was to replace the control system for the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. The old system was problematic and is currently being replaced by the Woodman Controls with the Distech Control System. When the contractor was awarded, we were aware and alerted the council that additional problems would be encountered as the project progressed. As the project progressed, the first order of items to be repaired were addressed in change order number one, which totaled $18,195, and was approved by the city council on December 15th, 2015. The control installation project is now nearly complete. The remaining items that require correction in change order number two are the eight items that you have listed in your packet in front of you. That totals $25,172. So with those two change orders, the new contract amount comes to 166,160. That is well below the amount of funding available of $200,030. Like I had mentioned, this project is nearly complete. Two weeks ago, two employees from Venue Works and myself went through the training to operate this system. I found the system to be very user-friendly and easy to navigate. It is a web-based program, so it's easy to jump from one piece of equipment to the next, bring up any type of a schedule. I think it's a vast improvement over what we had before. There are two outstanding issues that we are aware of, and that we're trying to figure out what is going to be the most cost-effective way of dealing with this, and that is to temper the air and control it in a piano room that's back behind the stage, and also the CVB office. We are looking at trying to figure out what is going to be the most cost-effective way, and we'll be bringing those issues to your attention here in the near future.
Okay, any questions for Dwight?
I have one.
Yes.
Have you estimated what your future energy savings might be with installing this new system? Because I, we had spoken with Scott not too long ago, and he said that it used to be, everything had to be one temperature or another, and being able to segregate out the rooms and, and put them at different temperatures now, there surely has to be some energy savings. So do you have any number to that yet?
No, we don't have any estimates, but based upon kilowatt-hours in the terms of gas that we use, by monitoring the monthly billings, we'll be able to determine what kind of cost savings there's going to be averaged out over the past history.
But there will be cost savings, and it undoubtedly correct?
We're anticipating that, yes.
Okay.
Bob? Yes, Dwight, when this structure was built, we had a, a project manager in place, and yet, one of the things supposedly leading up to all of this needing to be done was some material, some facets of it that were never functional. And I guess I'm curious, with this, and I'm glad it's all working, it really sounds great, but will you do a follow-up like this summer at some point, so that we're certain before any of these components go out of warranty, that in fact, they are working the way they should?
The short answer to your question is, yes. I've been directed to put together an assessment of the Bridgeview Center from, from top to bottom, and so we will have an inventory of all the equipment, and from that inventory, we'll be able to anticipate service life with that equipment. And so we will hopefully try to stay on top of that. One of the other things we want to do, because the Bridgeview Center is a 100,000-square-foot facility, and we've got a lot of equipment there, I, I think what we would like to propose is have a contractor come in that does the routine maintenance, that is far and above, like, replacing air filters, or, or doing the minor maintenance that we can expect Venue Works to do. The maintenance issues for that equipment over there is far more complicated than that, so we would recommend that we enter into some type of a maintenance agreement with a contractor that specializes in that kind of work, and maintain that operation.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, because I know this was kind of put into your lap, but I really appreciate what you've done, and then what you'll be doing in the future for that. Thanks, Dwight.
Thank you.
Victor?
Dwight, you mentioned that it was under the, the funding number, looks like by about 34,000, something like that. Out of those four different places for funding, then, are, are some of those used entirely, or where does that 34,000 that is being saved, and which, which of those buckets, I guess, is, is going to see that number, or some of that number?
Bob, do you think you could answer that one?
Or question?
Go ahead.
Dwight, thanks for everything you're doing and working with Bridgeview Center, and Larry, I know you're part of that, too. You know, when Councilmember Rowe and I sat down with Director Hallgren the other night, we had a great conversation, talked about a lot of things, but even after two years, I wasn't aware of some of the things, and when this facility was built, that went on, you know, up until this point. And it's nice to see a maintenance agreement, you recommending that be worked out. That's something that we, we seem to have trouble with on some of our facilities. But Director Hallgren talked about the fact that, that with this old system, that the facility was staying somewhere around 70 degrees all the time. And then you said it was a 100,000-square-foot facility, that's a lot of area to be, you know, be heated at that, that temperature all the time, so there's no doubt there's got to be some efficiency here. You said there were some other things that might be coming up as far as, you know, and we did anticipate some problems, so you built, you know, quite a big contingency in here, which was good. Well, that's, those few items, do you think, still keep us under budget when those things come to light, or what those might be?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll still be good?
Yes.
Okay. Again, thanks for your work, appreciate it, man.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 47, 2016, approving change order number one and accepting the work as finally complete with final pay request number four for the sidewalk drop and detectable warning installation project, 2015. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 47, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, Larry, go ahead.
This is the fourth contract implemented for this program for the city of Etumwa. It consists of the installation of sidewalk drops and detectable warnings at various locations throughout the city. This is one of the years under the ADA requirements under our transition plan, which was a 10-year plan, at 1.2 million, or targeted about 120,000 a year. The project was awarded to D.C. Construction from Dowd's, Iowa, in March 3rd, 2015, in the amount of 1,825. Change order one decreases the contract sum by 3,645.80 for reduction of quantity adjusted on the closeout of the project. New contract sum would be 119,179.20.
Any questions for Larry about this? I think this is an important thing that we've been working at, and will continue to work at for a number of years, so glad to see you're making progress on it.
Well, just, just for the general public's benefit, this is one of the requirements that's tied to all of our grants. I mean, we had to enter into this over all the years. They finally got to a point, they're basically going to say, you've got so many years to finish it. 10 years is what we agreed to.
Everybody ready? Yep. I want to make another comment, because Larry, that strikes me, again, something that new councilmen might not be aware of, or, or even the public, but this is a program that was really an ADA requirement, right, Larry?
Right, it's been required for some years. Some of the interpretations have changed over the years.
Yeah, but, but it just strikes me that we kind of lose sight of, okay, over that 10 years, why didn't we maintain this? Why didn't we do that? And this is a million dollars in 10 years, that, again, was revenue that, yes, and it's good that we're doing it, and, but, but it's also a mandate that we have to pay for. So, just wanted to make that point.
Probably to add a little clarity, Bob, one of the things that almost all municipalities did was, they would start doing these drops as they did street work. Under the definition originally, if you just did a mill and a fill, you didn't have to actually go in and add the handicap drops. That's changed now, but what they found was, no one was making their original target to complete the sidewalks throughout the cities. So they've come in and kind of, you know, went to a second tier and said, all right, come up with a plan that you can live financially, and let's, let's get an end date to this.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, ready to vote? Take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 49, 2016, approving the updated memorandum of understanding with Iowa Department of Administrative Services, State Accounting Enterprise, for participation in the income offset program. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 49, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
And Amanda addressed this, and she works with it.
The city signed a memorandum of understanding to participate in the Iowa Income Offset Program on August 18th, 2016. The Department of Administrative Services has recently requested that the city sign an updated MOU, and this simply just ensures our participation in the program.
Any questions for Amanda? She did a great job of explaining it to the city staff, and I think it's going to be beneficial to the entire city. Are there any other questions? If not, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 50, 2016, awarding the contract for the Lamborn Street Sewer Improvements Project. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 50, 2016.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
This project consists of the separation of a combined sanitary and storm sewer system on Lamborn Street by installing four intakes and approximately 116 linear foot of pipe and one manhole. Once the work has been completed, Lamborn will be overlaid this summer under our asphalt street program. We originally left the project July 9th, 2014, and you can see where the bid come in slightly over 74,000. That time, we recommended rejecting the bids. Bids were received and opened by the city February 10th, 2016, at 2:00 PM, and eight sets were free bids we received. The low bidder is D.C. Plumbing and Escavating of Drakeville, Iowa, in the amount of 51,055.40, and we've listed everybody we sent proposals to, and the budgeting information.
Any questions for Larry?
Larry, I have one. I'm looking at the list that you sent these out to, Wapalo County Sand and Rock, I didn't know they'd done this type of work.
Some of those companies, anytime they've got someone bidding, and they think they can supply rock for pipe bedding or around intakes, they, they'll take, takeoffs or take plans, or they can contact people they normally deal with in order to sell material. Same with Dowd's.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, let's take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 51, 2016, awarding the contract for the North Court Street Reconstruction Project Albany to Maple. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 51, 2016.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Go ahead, Larry.
This project will consist of full-depth, full-width PCC reconstruction of North Court from Albany to Maple. Over the years, of course, we've had a lot of water main breaks. Waterworks has come in, installed a new main a few years ago. We do have an agreement with Waterworks to pay for a portion of this, where they would have had to go in and patch about a third of the street, so we worked a deal out several years ago. And the city would cover the balance of construction cost, inspection, and replacement of the remaining area over the entire project. Bids received and opened by the city of Etumwa on February 10th, 2016, at 2:00 PM. 10 sets of plans were sent out, and two bids were received. The low bidder is D.C. Construction of Dowd's, Iowa, in the amount of 218,525. Again, we list the people that either request or we sent plans to, and you can see the engineer's estimate and where we sit on the budget.
Any questions for Larry?
Mr. Mayor, I just had one question. Sorry, what's the, if I have this correct, this is a, a one-block area, essentially?
Correct.
And then a timeframe for, for completion from your vantage point?
We're, we plan on doing that in the early spring, and should be done by late summer.
So I had, Mayor, thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 53, 2016, awarding the contract for the HMA PCC Street Crack Repair Program, 2016. Recommendation, pass and adopt, resolution number 53, 2016.
Is there a motion? Move the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
This project is one of our annual preventative maintenance programs, and consists of sealing cracks in both hot mix and PCC pavement. This process is critical in extending the useful life of the existing HMA mats and the PCC pavement. Each year, we budget 50,000 from the expanded street repair program. Streets are then selected, including the list in the staff summary, and we try to target about $45,000 worth of work, and that leaves us about 5,000 worth of engineering and inspection.
Any questions for Larry?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mark.
Larry, what, what's the determining factor for what streets get repaired?
We, we look at the most recent streets, and we've went down through those. We look at which ones are cracking and have certain width cracks, so we look at the, the condition of the street. Once a mat gets too far, then it doesn't really pay to go ahead and invest this kind of money, because it's not going to extend the life. If it's got, like, 50% alligator cracking, then crack sealing is beyond any usefulness to that mat.
Okay, thank you.
This might be an opportunity to share with the council that Larry's office has put together a rather comprehensive three-ring binder that has a lot of the street repair and work that has been done in the past, and invite any council member to come in and look at that. We want to keep the manual here, because it is rather comprehensive and very thick, but I think it gives a good history and shows that we have been making a significant effort to take care of our streets, and having just been in some other cities, most cities in Iowa are fighting the same thing we are, freezing and thawing just tears them up. Any other comments or questions?
I might add, I've seen that manual, and it, it's very, very impressive. You don't realize how much work was actually done till you build the manual like your staff did, and it's very impressive.
Okay, ready to vote? Take the roll, please.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Just a couple of things under communications. There will be a workshop on branding and imaging for the city. A number of the city organizations are working together to reexamine this question. I think the last time it was done was approximately 2002, so it's appropriate that the community decide if we want to continue with the motto, the city of bridges and so forth. A firm out of Des Moines that has worked here in Iowa is going to lead us through this process, and will bring more information back to the council. Our share of that will be in a neighborhood of $4,500 to $5,000, and I think it's money well-spent for, again, economic development and getting a unified kind of approach to share with people who are looking at our community. In that light, too, the First Committee, which is Future Inventing Responsibility Strategic and Teamwork is the acronym, will be meeting in March and pulling together their ideas and recommendations about the three co-located organizations, the Chamber, Main Street, and Economic Development. So we'll keep our fingers on that, and we have a representative from the Convention Visitors Bureau also involved in that. And then this morning, we had a RAG-BRI meeting, and I do want to make the council aware of the fact that March 10 is a required meeting for the overnight cities. So we will be taking city staff and co-chairs of the various committee. There are four executive committee chairs, and then there are like 20 committees underneath those four, and they will be spending the better part of the day in Des Moines, March 10. That's a requirement of the RAG-BRI Central Committee. Last but not least, there is a coffee talk on Saturday, the 20th, this coming Saturday, at the Market on Main at 9:30, and they'll have Representative Mary Gaskell, State Senator Mark Shalgren, the mayor, and I believe one county supervisor to just answer questions with the public and share information or any concerns that people have. With that, that's all the information I have. I did hand out a calendar to the council, and please look it over. If you see any adjustments you need to make or you want to suggest something, we'll certainly reexamine that and update it. Item K on our agenda, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address an issue that's not on the agenda? I see a hand up. Come on up and state your name, please, Connie.
Good afternoon, good evening. Connie Hammersay-Wilson, representing the Commerce. We have a couple of save the dates that we would like to let the community know and representatives. On February 26, that's a Friday, at 5:30 p.m., John Farrell with the USDA Department, he is our local representative, will be meeting primarily with the Church Street Business Community, and that includes all venues off of Church Street, not just Church Street proper. He came and met with Partners in Progress members, directors, about a month ago, and was amazing, some of the opportunities that were available to our building owners and our business owners. I'm also working with some other entities within the community. Representative Mary Gaskell will also be in attendance at this meeting at Bridgeview. Bridgeview has offered their facility to us at no charge to host this event, so we would like as many city leaders there and community members as possible there to get questions answered, to bring forth questions. I've invited, like I said, several different entities that may have opportunities to help our business community in the Church Street District to find ways to do improvements, updates, et cetera. So please put Friday, February 26, at 5:30 on your calendars, and please attend if at all possible. If nothing else, it'll bring some conversation, and we can look at some different areas and some ways that our business people can get some assistance. The other two dates, confirmed these both with Chief McAndrew and Sheriff Mark Miller. On Wednesday, March 9, at 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., we will be having Coffee with a Cop. It's a national initiative, and I felt the Chamber would be best to host this, and so with the agreement of both the chief and the sheriff. The Sheriff Coffee Talk will be Saturday, March 19, from 9 to 11, and both of these will be hosted at Bridgeview. So we appreciate Bridgeview offering their facility for all three of these very worthwhile events. So, any questions?
Connie, what time of day were those? I didn't catch that.
Yes, no problem. On March 9, Coffee with a Cop is 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. And then on March 19, which is a Saturday, that will be from 9 to 11 a.m.
Both at Bridgeview. You might also want to mention the annual banquet this week?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thursday, this Thursday, we will be having our annual partners banquet, so we're hoping that the turnout is as good as we've got so far. This is the first year that we've sold out, so if you have reservations, please come. It'll be a fun event. Lisa Calston will be doing our Women Wine and Whiskey. On Friday is our keynote speaker. Rich Kennedy from Iowa Works will be our emcee. It should be a very fun event, and we're going to be celebrating the Gene Schultz Award winner. And then we'll be, each of the partners have also picked a partner, a business partner, to give a special award to. So it should be a fun night and a very progressive evening.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Connie. Appreciate the update.
Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your assistance.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to address the council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for...
Mayor, excuse me. I had one other communication, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank, with our board appointments tonight, Rick Thompson to the Airport Advisory Board. Getting a pilot on that is such a good thing, and then seeing Dave Cecil here in the audience also. Thank Dave for being willing to serve on the Park Advisory Board. And again, just information-wise, Dave is not only the disc golf guru in Atumwa, but possibly the state, but I know over the last several years in talking with Parks Director Gene Ratchey, Dave has been willing to put in volunteer 40 hours a month to Gene and the parks for whatever was needed, and I just think, wow. And so thank you, David, for being willing to work on that board also.
Great. Anyone?
I'll second that.
You'll second that, okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain that motion.
So move.
Second.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are adjourned.[1763.33]